Welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, September 30th. We'll call to order at 6:32 PM. Discussion regarding the former IP mall site, no update at this time, correct?
No, but it's been a few weeks since Selkman-Bastrush and I have heard back from mass development, so I will follow up again this week.
Okay. Discussion regarding the housing bond bill funding for Care Drive infrastructure.
So we had a conversation at the last Select Board meeting about this source of revenue. We wanted to understand a little bit more about how to access it. This is a earmark in the housing bond bill that was secured by Representative Whipps. It made it through the final legislation. There's $100,000 that has been identified specifically for Irving in the development on Care Drive. The representative's office has clarified for us, just because the earmark exists in the approved legislation, it does not mean that the funding has been actually made available to us. So we do have to continue for advocacy for that. That process is working with the Administration and Finance Office and the Governor's Office. Representative Whipps is obviously the sponsor of that earmark, would work with us to access it. The exact timeline of when it may be available to us is not exactly clear. It needs to be worked into a capital improvement plan that comes from the Governor's Office.
I'd like to see it move forward. Whatever that advocacy looks like.
Yeah, I have no reason not to move forward with trying to get that released. It does bring up the question of whether or not we need to look for additional funds. We were hoping that was the source to help us with the items one, two, and three.
Right.
Which we held off on because we don't have the funding yet.
Right.
So we'll have to keep looking elsewhere for the time being, since this will come into play much later.
Correct.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll start that work with them and keep you apprised as I learn more.
Sounds good. Review meeting minutes from September 9th?
Motion to approve meeting minutes from September 9th, 2024 is written.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Reviewing issuance of the sixth water commitment for FY '25?
Make a motion to approve the sixth water commitment for FY 2025 in the amount of $46,619.45 for water use charges.
I'll second that. Some of the issues we had with readings have all been resolved, or are they just absolutely wrong?
Everything's been corrected.
It's all corrected and it's all incomplete.
Few accounts that had to be estimated because of meter issues, so we will be sending notices to every one of those account holders to try to schedule an appointment with the Water Department to come in and check their meters.
Get them, okay. Resolved. Alright. Sounds good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion regarding request for police detail for the presidential election.
The only question I had, and I didn't pull up the budget, did he have a line in there to, in his operating? Because the chief will end up billing it.
For detail. We had a different chart of accounts back the last time we did this.
Right, that's why, that's why I was, you know.
I can't recall if we've created it in the manner that would work with our current chart of accounts, so we would likely have to set up the line item, but he has funding in the election.
He has the funding, it's whether or not it's in the right line item.
Correct.
Okay.
So he might build a new line negative, but fund it from elections or something like that?
Correct.
Alright.
I don't have any concerns with it. If the town clerk feels it's appropriate with the climate, feel free. If he's got the funding for it and wants to put somebody on staff, and the chief can figure out how many and how long, I don't see an issue with it.
Yeah, it sounded like the chief was prepared to.
Yeah.
I think, given the times and the climate, it's appropriate if he sees fit.
Do you want a, do you want a motion for that? Does it need one?
For this one, because it's your authorization to approve a request like this, I think it would make sense if you wouldn't mind putting it in the motion.
I'll just give you a general one, that make a motion to approve the town clerk's request for police detail. The presidential election held November 5th, 2024, staffing to be determined by the Chief of Police in coordination with the town clerk.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion regarding request to support the Northern Tier Rail proposal.
I don't know if the three of you have had this conversation yet.
They haven't. I went to one of the first meetings and we discussed it, and I sort of knew it was coming, but I don't think it's been at the table.
I know it's been going on, but I don't think we've had any discussions about it.
Yeah, so Brian and I were chatting about it a little bit before the meeting. It's, it's really just to try and show, show of support from every municipality, every town that the rail comes in contact with, from North Adams through Boston. It's to try and garner up as much advocacy and show of support as they can, and there's multiple levels as you could see from there. You know, one is the template, use that, modify it if you want, write your own. And the other is doing direct contact emails and reaching out if you have additional support you want to talk about, if you have specific ideas related to the program, to the rail. So, you know, my stance on it when I was chatting with Brian about it is, I'm not a, I'm not an opponent of it, and I actually think it'll be a good thing. I'm just not one of the people that's going to be out there with the banners saying, "This has to happen." And I look at that from the lens of the impact to the town of Irving. There really won't be one, so that's why I'm sort of, yeah, it's a really good idea. There's a lot of, you know, riders that, you know, could take advantage of this, and I think it would be a good thing to have. I don't see any harm in signing on a letter of support. It would have a different feel if there was immediately a platform or a stop in town, and then what would the impacts of that be with additional cars and traffic patterns on Route 2, and it would be more at stake that I would sort of be vested in. This one is a pass-through, so for me, it's just another train that's going to drive by the town. It's great, and I hope it gets the ridership that they're looking for, and I have, I would be willing to sign on a letter of support. I think it's a good thing. There's many, many travelers that don't have the same ability to just hop in a car and go, and if you can get from one side of the state to another on a rail, I think it's a good idea.
Would say, my comments would mirror yours. I don't see myself as being a user of this, and I was decidedly neutral for a lot of those reasons. It's minimal to no impact
Yeah.
on us as a municipality. However, you bring up a good point. There are other people who could really benefit from this.
Yeah, and even locally, it looks like there's stops in the Greenfield area, and I think it was either Orange or Athol. There was sort of, depending on what, there was like six or seven different versions that were discussed, showing where the stops are. So they're close enough where, you know, local, local residents could hop on that, that train, just a 15-minute, you know, bus ride even from here to get to the next platform.
Yeah, especially with the on-demand bus service now.
Yeah.
Too. I mean, that makes it even simpler.
So.
And people coming the other way who, who may not have vehicles and stuff from the city have the opportunity to come out this way easier, too.
Agreed.
But I agree with both of you. No specific negative impact or just in general impacts to the area that we would need to consider, so.
Yeah.
Sounds like in support of signing a letter of support?
Yeah, I'm just looking at timeline for when the public comment ends.
I'll see, it's October 12th.
Okay, so we've got a little bit of time. I was just going to say, I didn't, there was a template, and I sort of scanned through the template. I'm not a huge fan of just taking a template and signing it without ensuring that we're 100% on board with it. Will we have another opportunity, or probably not, right?
Not unless we hold an additional meeting for that specifically.
Your next meeting, I think, will be after the 12th.
Yep.
If you're okay with it.
Which is why I dropped it on tonight.
If you're okay with it, I mean, I don't mind reading it, and, and I can work with Brian and just give any feedback, and then with my feedback, his feedback, just to make sure it's tailored to the town of Irving, and it's not just a cookie cutter that every other town is sending in. If we're going to send in a letter of support, I'd like it to be authentic from the town of Irving, but I don't want to hold it up. So I'd be willing to do that offline if you're okay with that.
Absolutely.
I'm okay with that.
Do you, do we want all of us to sign, or do we just want authorized one, or what do you want to do on that side of it? Because it can get finalized and signed offline if we've approved it, obviously, or endorsed it.
I'm indifferent to that. I mean, I don't care. You can do it, if you want to sign it on behalf of the Select Board.
Don't care, again, that doesn't matter.
You know, just to make it easier, so you're not trying to track us all down.
Okay.
Or we can go electronic.
I was going to say, we could get the electronic.
If you're drafting, working on the draft, then by the time it's finalized, you can sign it.
Yeah.
And I can, it doesn't, it doesn't make any difference, so. I'll make a motion that we endorse a letter of support for the Route 2 rail, or the Northern Tier rail, generally as presented, but specifically, Selkman-Scott-Bastrush will finalize a tailored letter from, from the town of Irving, but will be signed by the Chair and/or the Board.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian, I'll, I'll give you any thoughts I have on that by, say, Wednesday.
No problem. Thank you.
And you'll let us know when it's ready, and we'll.
Absolutely.
Those who can or want to can come sign. Okay. With that, it is 6:45, so I'm going to call the joint meeting with Recreation Commission to order. Y'all want to come on up? I noticed that. I should have asked you if you were prepared for that or not.
Oh, yeah, sorry, come on over there. No, it's fine. I just forgot to run this until just a couple minutes ago.
Until I said, "Over here."
That's right.
Should be. Make sure that's set before we get going here. So we have a letter of interest for one of the vacancies?
Yes, Tom Glennon. He's actually here tonight, if you'd like him to.
Thank you for joining us. So, everybody have a chance to review the letter?
We did. We, we actually have been working with Tom for a while. He's, last year was the baseball coach, and this year he's blessed his soul coaching the pre-K through K soccer. There are 15 of them.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Coaching. That's a word for it.
He also participated in our fall festival, so.
Thank you. Coming from somebody who did one season of T-ball. Kudos to you.
I have my scars from.
We appreciate your willingness to do what you do.
Sounds like there's some story behind that.
Yeah, there is.
For another night. Any questions or?
No, we're very happy he stepped forward. He'll give us a full committee. We haven't had a full committee in a very long time. So we look forward to it. Like I said, we're familiar with him and have worked with him in other capacities, and we think he'll add something to the committee.
Excellent.
I am willing to make a motion to appoint Thomas Glennon as a member of the Rec Committee through June 30th, 2024, 25, excuse me? It's been a long week already.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, it's a roll call vote. Brian, we call the roll.
Selkman-Wynne?
Aye.
Chairman Smith?
Aye.
Selkman-Bastrush?
Aye.
Recreation Commission, Erborden?
Aye.
Recreation Commission Chair, Icorn?
Aye.
And Recreation Commission Member Sadler?
Aye.
With that?
Sounds unanimous.
It is? Welcome aboard. I'm glad Brian gets that mouthful, so thank you for calling the roll. It's a lot. Alright, well, we're excited to have, have you join, and excited to have you as a member.
Yep.
So thank you for joining us tonight. Did that happen? Anything else for us?
No, well, we did. We had a very successful fall festival. We had between 300 and 400 people.
Excellent.
Almost 30 vendors. I had a strong public safety presence. Kudos to Laura Gordon. She not only brought
Smokey the Bear.
Smokey, Smokey the Bear, and Ziva, and the Greenfield Police Department, and then we got the clinical support, CSO, and then also the OIB task force, and the fire department came out as well, so we had a strong showing for public safety.
Sparky was there, McGruff was there, they were all there.
We had some activities. Everybody stayed a long time for, we had beautiful weather, which was a treat. It's been a long time since it hasn't rained. And we, I think our vendors were happy, and yeah, so it was good. So that was probably our, and our next thing is the trunk or treat, which is October 27th, so. Well, that's about all we've been coming up, other than soccer, so.
Excellent. Well, thank you.
I will say, I sampled several of the food selections.
He was the burger guy.
Yes.
See, there we go. Perfect.
Burgers, fried dough, whoopee pies.
Okay, you're going to make me hungry.
I had to work hard, I couldn't even go.
Is this dinner we're talking about? Alright, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting of Recreation and continue the Select Board meeting at 6:50.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Touch tomorrow to have you get sworn in with the town clerk. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up.
Alright. Discussion regarding town legal services. So I wanted to bring this forth to the Board to discuss. We, over the, I feel like in the last five, maybe 10 years, we've expanded kind of our special counsel beyond general counsel, and added, you know, as we've had different things, especially personnel counsel and such, you know, depending on what we were working on, and as we continue to seem to have more and more that we're doing, more and more that we're, we're trying to balance. And unfortunately or fortunately, the need for more special counsel, it seems at times, to really help us, help guide us appropriately, you know, whether it's, you know, conservation or Health Department regulations, you know, the different specialties and nuances is, everything gets more complicated, right? And we have more and more statutes that keep coming, so just knowing that, knowing the bandwidth and the amount of things that we have going on, wanted to bring it up and have a discussion about how do we want to approach council going forward? Are we, are we meeting our needs the way, the way we are now? Do we want to look at making some changes there? I know at times we have needs or timelines that we can't always get to, whether that's, you know, us or council bandwidth, et cetera, et cetera, right?
Yeah.
And so, you know, I know Donna has, you know, worked for us for many, many years and done a lot with us for a long, long time.
Yeah.
And I also know that she's kind of reducing her, her practices. She nears probably, well, I don't know, I assume nears retirement at some point in the future, so kind of downsizing the practice, I think, right, from what it was.
There was a change in her practice, but she's still.
She's still active, yeah, yeah, not, not her specifically, but just
Right.
as time has gone on, you know, and seeing where the town has been going. Just want to kind of
So.
get the pulse from all of you.
Yeah, I have some thoughts on it. Having Donna run a small firm with herself and one other staff member, I believe, currently, the timelines that Irving is looking for oftentimes can't be met. It's just too cumbersome, and sometimes we can be a little over, overbearing and demanding, and we sometimes need things, you know, yesterday.
Overly ambitious.
And so, and all, and I say that with honesty, that sometimes the things do come up last minute, and we're looking for legal guidance, and we need it, you know, in a very prompt manner. And a small, sole proprietor style firm, I don't think, you know, given the timelines, has the ability, or hasn't in recent, you know, months or years, had the ability to meet those. And that's not to say that the work that's being offered isn't good work, it's just a matter of timeliness. And I wouldn't be opposed to looking for a larger firm that has more bandwidth and more ability, so that if people aren't available, somebody can fill in, so there's always a contact, there's always somebody there at the ready. So I would, I would not be opposed to looking elsewhere, if that's a possibility.
I think ultimately there are some things that, they do come up, and I agree. The, the body of work that we receive is quality work. But in my time on the Board, I've experienced a want for a quicker response because situations dictated it. I think we need to do what's best for the town, and if that means we need to consider other options for a more timely response, or for more specialized service, when those new on situations come up, then we owe it to our community, our voters to, to do that.
Yeah, I think I've experienced some of the same, and so, you know, in, in the timeliness side of it, right, the quality of work obviously has been excellent, but it isn't always as quick as we have wanted or needed, and we sometimes are overly ambitious. I mean, if we be honest about it, the number of things we try to take on and ask our, our team to take on and do at the same time, so. I think that's the pace that we're moving, and the town is moving, has changed significantly, too, over the last five plus years, five to 10. I did inquire with some of the other firms that we work with about, or asked Brian to, as well, about capacity, ability, and services, yes, specialized service offerings and, you know, on the firm, so. I will pronounce it wrong. Myrick?
Myrick.
Myrick, thank you. Who has our personnel counsel and has filled in on a few other things, you know, ad hoc as needed, does have the ability to offer general counsel regs, health code, obviously already have personnel. Trying to think of what else there was. Land use type, you know, basically the variety of things that at least Brian and I could think of grouping-wise and specialties, they do have specialized counsel for each and every one of those on staff.
That's what I was going to ask. It's not just general counsel. They have
No.
a, a team that can specialize in all of the different areas.
I'm not misstating any of that, but I believe they have general, we have personnel already with them.
Right.
And then they have others who specialize in those areas.
Okay.
On staff.
Right.
And I, I asked it, you know, obviously, I spoke with Donna ahead of time and let her know, I was just going to bring it up, I didn't want it to be a surprise to her, so. I'd already let her know, we bring up the conversation, and, and after that, I did, you know, reach out to them to find out. They are just one of the firms that we've used most recently. You know, I know there's KP law that many use, that we have talked about in past years, and referenced some of their guiding, you know, documents and things, so. There are other options, and I don't know how the Board would like to, you know, pursue, consider, or look at, and I think from a procurement standpoint, it's just a decision of the Boards. There's no formal required process.
Is exempt from 30B.
Yeah.
So it's a decision, general counsel is a decision of the Board.
And then providing the ability to access special counsel, it's a choice for those Boards and Commissions that may need it, to use it or utilize someone else's, their choice, obviously.
Correct.
We can make it available within the same firm.
Correct.
If we have it.
Which has been your best practice.
Right. So that's, so it sounds like there's an appetite to see, you know, see about changing. I guess how, how do you, do either of you Do either of you kind of contemplate how we might approach it? Or I guess, from here?
There are things that existing counsel is currently engaged in, correct?
Yes.
And to me, it would make sense to carry that forward to completion rather than make a, you know, a complete switch and changeover and requiring another firm to pick up a ball that's already rolling and sort of transition through where a new firm would, that we've talked about, would pick up, well, obviously continue any current work that they're doing, but pick up the new things and provide that nuanced support as needed. And again, without talking specifically about any one issue or case or anything else, we might want to maintain our flexibility to make those determinations.
Yeah. I have a list that Brian and I started putting together of kind of what's out there that we knew of, that's in progress or seem to be. And then anything that we thought was on the horizon where we would be looking for, you know, council assistance on things down the road. So, I kind of have some of that draft, but I guess I was more thinking of a, that sounds like transition plan on how, or have we put any thought about selecting? If we're making a change, selecting who that is? Or do we want to, for a period, utilize another firm and see how that goes through some work period? I don't think, you know, necessarily have a, you know, whether or not a firm would require a retraining agreement, or it would be, you know, kind of working as needed, or just different ways we might get there. And that may depend on what the firm requires, depending on the services that they're committing to.
I was just gonna say, so we do have a working relationship with Myrick. And I would not be opposed to using some of their special counsel and using them for new things as they come up. Like you said, even if it's a trial thing for the next few months, as we move forward. We know the work product that we've gotten. We see the timeliness that we've gotten for responses for the items that they have been working on us with. And if that trend were to be the trend across the board, I'd have no concern with proposing a change to move over to them for all of our council needs. Just how we do that transition, again, that's to, you know, sort of a transitioning plan. I'm not fully sure that I have, you know, lockdown plan. I like the idea of, you know, you don't just cut ties on September 30th.
Yeah, no, I don't think that makes sense.
And there's just too much out there, and there's too much knowledge out there, and too much work has been invested in some of these ongoing things, that it would be prudent to finish those through to fruition, as long as all parties are still willing to do that. But they're a decent sized firm with a lot of specialty staff members, and I think that fits what we've been needing in this town, having a diverse group of staff that can meet our needs for all the varying things that we have going on. So, I would, I'd be in favor of reaching out to Myrick and seeing if they have any needs that they would need met in order to start a transition plan and what that would look like on their end. But I hope we can go from there.
I think that makes sense to me. And, you know, there's definitely some things that we could, that are probably in the wings, if you will, or haven't really started yet, where we could start working with them and see what that experience is too for a period, if that made sense. Again, obviously checking with them on any requirements they may have and in the way that they kind of approach a more holistic counsel offering, other than having said that they did have bandwidth for it. So, I think, Brian, if you want to reach out to, and probably Brian Falcon, you know, inquire with him, you know, if we want to kind of just maybe work through the rest of the year and see, or if they have anything that they need or agreements in place that they would expect, and we can discuss it. Unless you already have that answer.
I don't. But I can follow up for you.
Okay. And then in terms of open items, let me just skim this list here, I think. There's a whole list of upcoming, and I think without maybe looking at any of these too closely, most of them would be, you know, an option to go either way. So, if there's, unless there's something that had some prior work done where it made sense to stick with, I don't think there's anything there that lends to requiring one or the other. The, and I'm not gonna touch on all of them, but just a couple of them. The Church Street Bridge easements and stuff, obviously, we've been working with Donna on that for a while, so I wouldn't want to change that and like to hopefully, hopefully get through that soon and be done and have a bridge soon.
Right.
So, we stick with that project for sure. The police department parcel, has she started on that? Have we done anything? I know we did some survey work, right?
The survey work is done. The plan's ready for recording. The town meeting vote happened at the annual town meeting. It's the legal notices and the requirements for the taking because the heirs are unknown.
Gotcha.
So, the deed discrepancy dates back to the 30s. So, there's nobody to notify that we have contact for. So, there's a legal procedure for handling that.
Got it.
And so, we need to do that with counsel.
So, yeah, I don't have any preference either way. So, let's say whatever work has been done, that you've been closer to it. So, if it makes sense to continue with Donna on that, that's totally fine. I had a conflict of interest question that we still, I don't believe we'd had any response on, so I would like to forward that on to Myrick. The DESI issue is kind of ongoing-ish, or kind of that discussion with the superintendent, et cetera, and the supervisory. So, I guess I defer to you as the lead on that, whether you want to make a change or continue, Jim, and you can think about it.
Superintendent White Cleveland's prepared to give you all an update.
Right. And so, I don't know if there's more work to be done on the council side of that, but if there is, Jim, I would say it's your choice. You don't need to decide now, but your choice, you know, as you go, if you want to continue or not.
Follow up with Brian outside of this meeting to get a brief so that, in the interest of time here.
Yep. Absolutely. And you can make that decision, you know, certainly with Brian. I don't need to, we don't need to decide on that, just to have it out there. I know there's open items with the Board of Health, so obviously, we can advise them of the, you know, once we kind of sort out, if there's anything special with Myrick in terms of an agreement, then we can advise them that that's an option if they wish to utilize that for new or existing, depending what they're in the middle of. The town code work has been going on for a long time, so I don't think there's any reason to change that.
Right.
I would expect we want to get that finished with Donna's support.
With the Attorney General's office now. So, any questions currently would be referred back to the town clerk or to town council as they have on record.
And then we have a couple other special, you know, or other boards' items that are open or coming up that we can give them the option, obviously, to work with Myrick or Donna, whichever is appropriate based on where they're at. And then upcoming, you know, planning board and conservation commission. So, we have a variety of things always, but especially upcoming. So, same, same there. I think, I know the planning board has had some special counsel as well already, so there's that, or Myrick is an option too. They do have special counsel for that, so. Anything else that any of you is aware of or that's in progress that you would have an opinion or a preference either way? I think we have a wastewater argument with Montague is upcoming.
Right. We need to finish that in the next month or so. And so, we'll need council review on the agreement that we're drafting.
Okay. Jim, I hear you're leading that one as well. So, your preference or where you have gotten to and where you want to go from there? I think, you know, there's a lot of upcoming project stuff, but I don't know of any other open items.
Okay.
So, and any other boards and commissions that have open stuff, obviously, it's their choice to continue. And once we finalize this, we can let them know that the option's there.
Okay.
Anything else on that at the moment?
Not at the moment.
Okay. So, we'll look for feedback next meeting on anything that Myrick may be looking for in a short term and/or long term agreement. And we'll revisit then, and otherwise, once that's done, we can let the rest of the boards and commissions or boards committees, et cetera, know that that option exists and give them some direction on what they can do from here.
Okay.
And obviously, if you have items that come up and we need counsel, obviously, just give Brian direction on how you want to go with that. And then we'll revisit in a few months, once we can see where things are going.
Yeah.
Okay. Pardon me. Excuse me. Discussion regarding rectangular rapid flashing beacons for pedestrian safety grant opportunity.
I wanted to hear you all say that, so I put it in.
You want the RRFBs too?
Nobody would know what that is.
Nope. Nope.
So, I don't know if the memo in the email made sense, but high level, the state has a big push right now to install more pedestrian safety measures statewide. And so, they have launched a program that will provide the, it's the post-mounted, push-button-activated flashing beacons that will flash while you're crossing the crosswalks, so they're timed.
Like Church Street Route 2, like North Street, Arch Route 2, those ones?
Right. We have some examples throughout town right now. So, the state is making these available. They don't tell you how, they don't know how many people are going to apply, so there's a deadline coming up in the next week. So, they don't tell you a guarantee as to how many towns are going to get these and if you can ask for more. They haven't really given too much guidance on that. The question would be is if you do install, if you do put in an application, the first part, are you putting in for more than one, and are you prepared to rank like a priority? The state obviously makes the decisions on the equipment, it's their equipment until they give it to the town. And so, they very well may look at your application and look at data related to your streets. I'm sure they'll look at crash data and other statistics to decide which are their priorities. And then the town's role in that, after accepting the equipment, is committing to installing them per the regulations within 90 days. I have met with Glenn, 90 days seems like a reasonable amount of time to be able to accommodate that. And now that we've had some experience installing equipment like this in the past, we have through some trial and error, we've learned some quicker, you know, efficient methods to do installation. So, we think we can make that timeline work.
Owned by the town?
The equipment becomes the property of the town once we install it. If we do not install within 90, it goes back to the state.
The equipment goes back to them?
If we don't install it in accordance with their guidelines, they take it back. But once we've installed it and they sign off on it, it's our equipment.
So, if we bolt it down in 91 days, they'll maintain it?
No.
I'm not kidding.
That's what I heard.
Unless that flatbed's here on the 91st day and bolting down.
Right.
Okay. I just, anyway.
So, the streets, if you were interested, the streets that we receive, the higher level of concerns of pedestrian issues would be Church, would be North in that lower section where we have crosswalks. And Pratt Street is a typical one we also get feedback on in terms of pedestrian concerns. Doesn't mean we don't have other areas throughout town that we have pedestrian concerns, but in terms of crossings.
Do we already have one at Pratt, or is that across 63 at Pratt?
That's Lester.
It's Lester.
So, on Lester, at the end of Pratt, on 63, there's...
It's crossing 63, it's not Pratt. Okay.
We had initially, you all had discussed potentially putting one at Pratt, at the cross Pratt at the intersection with Lester. We were afraid of overcomplicating that intersection anymore than it already is, so we just did the Lester Street crossing. But there's no others on Pratt. There's three crosswalks on Pratt.
I do have to ask, these are only visual. There is no beeping or noise associated with them? And I ask because...
That's a good question.
The location of the one on Pratt Street is at the, it doesn't get any closer than in front of my property. So, I have to ask, am I going to be listening to a buzzer telling somebody to cross the street?
That's a great question, and I will ask that question.
Just curious, as a property owner, not as a select board member. I'm in favor of them. I'm just curious.
Only at 3:00 AM.
Only at 3:00 AM, when the kids are walking by. Hit it one more time.
All of the ones that I've seen installed locally by the state are just the flashing.
That's what I assumed.
But that is a good question, because I've encountered the audibles.
I have as well. Are you sure? Church Street makes noise, because it was making noise even when it wasn't on.
It's a, the only thing that you hear audible is like the proximity to the button. You don't hear a, wait, it's safe to cross or...
But they're not silent.
Audible announcement that it's time to cross. You hear like a little chirp, right? When you go near the button?
Yes, or all the time if it's just malfunctioning.
Yeah, that's approximately. But I think to select ambassador's point, there are some that do an audible announcement, it's time to cross, or something of that nature.
Right.
And I have not seen the state install those in Franklin County. Doesn't mean they don't exist. But I can clarify that.
Okay. Now, this would be for town-owned roads, not state-owned?
The state does this on their own as they have needs, and we've had them do that. Route 2 is a perfectly example. They installed those on Route 2 at our request, working with citizens. So, this program is specifically making the equipment available to municipalities to install on public streets.
Look forward to your feedback. When is the due date on that?
October 10th.
So, you need this thing today. Is there bandwidth to submit one of these right now?
To submit it? The submit is easy. It installs construction, so.
Well, neither one is your bandwidth, hopefully. Well, the submit is, and that's what I was more asking for. You already said Glenn said they had the capacity and could meet the deadline.
It all depends on when they are received. I have not seen any special equipment that we've ordered arrive in 30 days. They plan to review all these applications and start making decisions by the end of October. But if they place that order and it shows up in January, the idea that we're going to be drilling into the frozen ground to do this is...
Yeah, this will be a springtime.
It's a spring project.
Well, I think all of DOT understands that.
Yeah.
So, 90 days or not, if that's when they arrive, I'm sure there'll be a change in that timeline.
Yeah. So, for those reasons, we're not too concerned.
Okay.
Then these are powered by solar?
Oh, solar, correct. And at first, we didn't have a lot of experience with that technology, and again, there were some learning challenges with that. But we now have several solar devices throughout town. All of Lillian's Way is lit with solar-powered lights, and the speed monitoring sign that's out here, it's all solar-powered. And so far, they're working fine.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with submitting it going forward. We have a window of opportunity. If we change our mind, we can...
Correct.
We can always give them back to them and say, thanks. Find another town that wants them.
Come pick them up. It's been 92 days.
That's right. I was gonna say, on the 92nd day, we just tell them the location of where they are, and they can come pick them up.
Send an email, we're waiting.
They're waiting for you.
Did those locations make sense? Or are there some you'd like to take off, or would you want to consider something different?
I think we want to understand. Do you need to put the locations in the application?
Yes.
Terms of priority?
They only offered us one set.
Do I need to step aside and talk as a resident and not as a select board member?
Do you feel inclined?
Do you have to rank them, or just offer where we might put them?
It's not clear if I have to rank them. They may ask me to rank them if they come back and say, we can only give the town one set.
Sure. But they haven't yet. It's just a list where?
Correct.
Any other feedback on public safety on locations, others in residence? Any other feedback on public safety on locations, other than residents?
I have not received any feedback from public safety. I've only spoken to the highway department so far about this.
I guess my thought would be, I don't think there's anything wrong with locations listed, they make sense. But also, asking public safety if they've, in their, you know, community engagement, as well as, you know, citizen outreach to them, is there other areas that they think are significant?
Okay, I can absolutely follow.
I think we already have them in some of the places that I would think of, like out here, Leicester, near the parks, Veterans Park, or on Leicester. So, and on Church and North Crossing 2 now, so.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know of others that jump out to me, you guys?
I'm aware of a sidewalk crossing improvement happening down here at the corner of Forest, Northfield Road, and SEM. The state's planning to improve that, it's the end of the state layout. I can't recall if they're putting these in, so I'm going to follow up on that, just to double check to see if that's part of their plan.
I don't have a problem with the locations that are suggested here. Just this past weekend, I observed some traffic in the north and Church Street area that really made me scratch my head as to how Darwin missed some of these people.
I was thinking Church and North, but we've got a long way to go, the bridge isn't there yet, so I don't know what that'll look like. But I think of that as an area that's challenging. And there's another one that I, oh, the other end of SEM Drive. There's a lot of traffic that goes across right there. I don't know how helpful it is from the Route 2 direction, so that's by the time you're turning, but it's just another, I mean, between the parking lot, bowling alley, and everything, Duncan's, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic there, so.
I think that's another, SEM Drive is another one that we'll have to reconstruct in the coming years. There's some degradation, probably because of all the 18-wheeler traffic that comes through that section.
The state?
SEM is ours. But we do have to have a conversation, I think, about the pedestrian pieces of that. You have a bus stop that's glazed but not accommodated in any way there. So there may be some other improvements to do, and we could maybe do like a complete streets approach to that, and talk about putting in the beacons.
Yeah. I don't know that around the Park Street Park, those, I think it's, I don't know. But I think it's residential enough, and the sidelines are really strong there, so it's probably not a big concern.
As part of those upgrades, three years ago, or four years ago at this point, we put in new crosswalks, new compliance signage, and they were all striped, so.
Yeah.
And those, I don't believe most of those existed previous to the project, so.
Right. I mean, I don't know if you need a motion, but it sounds like we're in favor of putting it forward and.
You're okay with that?
And not hearing any other significant areas that we should add. But if you find any from public safety, I think I would have no problem adding them to the list.
Okay.
Worst case, they come back and say prioritize what you have, because we only have a few, and then we can revisit it then.
Absolutely.
Anything else?
Okay. I'll reserve the right to.
Recuse and be a citizen, absolutely, always.
You got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Review of the use of electronic signatures policy draft first read. As you said, feedback was on Section 8. I think we started when I was asking you about council there before we started, was that it may not be necessary, doesn't mean we don't want to have it.
Right.
Also, digital signatures, we're not incorporating. Does the statute contemplate digital signatures, or does it stay away from that? Do you recall?
I can go back and double-check. The issue's going to be, there's certain pieces of this tucked in different statutes.
Okay.
So, probably the more recent statute change, what they call it, 110G, is specifically contemplating how a land use board or a select board would document one, the authorization for some form of electronic signature, and how does that get communicated to the registry of deeds? For recognition. So we didn't embed that language into here, and borrowed some of that best practice. There's other federal and state statutes that address with the legality of an electronic signature versus a wet signature, which had been the standard. So it's kind of picking from each of those to blend together a policy.
Okay.
I think the issue that I was struggling to find comparable examples in the state, so I had to go a little broader when I was looking for other policy examples to see how certain institutions addressed it, was the standardization, or at least what's the bare minimum requirements for an electronic signature that the town will recognize. So something that's password-protected, or something that comes from an approved platform, even if there's more than one platform. Whether or not you would just accept somebody's, you know, scanned image of their signature versus something that's got a, you know, a verifiable date, timestamp, a method stamp.
It's more like a digital signature, as opposed to a electronic signature.
Right. So this sort of contemplates, even I'm using, and maybe the terminology needs to be clarified better, if there's distinction that's not clear enough here. The proposed Section 4 was trying to delve into potential requirements that would be necessary to have the town deem that signature to be valid. Again, these are just examples, so we could delete, add, whatever made sense.
And you had already mentioned your 0404, right? Sections?
Right, yes. The other question I raised is, what will you allow people to sign with them? So, there was a conversation about warrants, that was really the genesis of this conversation. So warrants were the first things I put on here. But other things such as bill schedules, our department heads allowed to sign off on the bill schedules. I'm assuming if you all are willing to have an appointing authority sign off on a warrant, you would be willing to allow a department head to sign off on the schedule. So I put those together. Permits and licenses, I'm assuming we would be fine with that. Contracts, is that something that you want wet signatures only on? Or is that something that you're willing to take an electronic signature commitments, like the water commitment tonight? Is that something that can be signed virtually? But then are there other things that are not viable, in terms of this procedure that you would even consider or recognize as a valid signature for a document here? So one example I put on was the town meeting warrant. Is that something that you're open to having be a document that could be signed electronically, or is that a document that should always have a wet signature to it?
Does the statute limit any of them, other than those that require it, like federal, state?
I have not found state statutes that prevent you from sending these documents, so some of that may be personal preference. I do want to revisit, once I got your initial reactions to this draft, I want to revisit this topic with the town clerk from a permanent record standpoint, and have him go through with that lens. Whether or not there's certain documents that he preserves in perpetuity, that he believes need to be wet signatures, so that we can go back through and just verify if there's been modifications to statutes, or any accommodation for this.
Yeah, minutes is probably a big one, it's not on there, those are signed. Good point. That's one that people would ask about, I would ask about it if I was taking them.
I mean, just from a practicality standpoint, you have on here, you know, payroll warrants, accounts payable warrants. However, it's kind of a moot point. You can look at that accounts payable warrant, unless you're going to scan the entire thing in there, to be able to read every single document and proof it. The summary sheet isn't enough to be able to say, I want to sign that.
So I think we need to be clear about what must be in the packet to be reviewed. And that's sort of what I was trying to get, I don't delve into that too much, but what I was trying to get into, when you get into Section 5, when you get into Section 6, when you're getting into those other sections that start talking about, when you're the requestor, you have certain responsibilities. When you're the signer, you have certain responsibilities. So we can build those sections out, to be clear about this.
And to what you're getting at, and I think it's very important, is if we're talking more on the digital signatures, this is verifiable, this is, you know, there's a level of authenticity behind the sanctity of the document that the signature's attached to, and the signature itself, and who generated it, then you're getting into things where, you know, like Adobe Sign or DocuSign, the entire document came with it, to your point, the whole warrant.
The whole, yeah.
That you're signing off on, and when you sign it, it's not editable. It's now been locked with that digital signature, so they can't modify the signed version. And there has it, you know, it can be certified that it has, that is the complete and original document at the time of signature, with the time and digital footprint and all that. So, those are the pieces where I think, depending on what it is, is more important, and how it's done. And being sure that we're very clear about what we accept, or what we define as acceptable. I would say, I think, it's one of the last ones that I had to sign, I think it was one of the last castles that I had to sign, was very specific, and it did allow for electronic, but it wasn't submitted to us in the form that allowed it, so I couldn't. Irritated me, but just a little.
Any sense.
But it was very specific, and I think it was probably a third of the page that talked about which forms of electronic and digital signatures were allowed, and in what ways, for what, for the document. And it was really well-defined, so it might be a good example to grab and borrow. Because it was very like, you know, S slash, you know, Arial font slash is not a signature, you know? That's not a digital signature, it's not an electronic signature, it's acceptable.
Let me take a look at that document.
An actual finger or pen or touchscreen signature, or a true digital signature. And it talked about when and what formats, right, was allowed, so you're not just throwing it in a Word document, sending it back and saying, hey, I signed it with a picture, or whatever that might be, right?
Right.
So I think it was a good, it was a very detailed one. I spent more time than I maybe wanted to, thought I would, in reading it, because it perked my interest in that moment, and especially with this coming down the road, so.
Well, and even, that's a great example, that's probably the most advanced one I've seen from the state. The state's using that, and the state's using the old.
The one that's wet only, yeah.
That you only mail it back and forth, right, so, and everything in between. So even the state is at varying levels of adoption, when it comes to this.
Well, and in reality, these days, a true like certified digital signed document is more authentic than a faxed, scanned, emailed, wet-signed document.
Fair, yeah.
I mean, it's more genuine than that, for whatever it's worth, you know?
If everything's set up correctly, absolutely.
Yeah. Well, and there's technology behind it, and there's licensing behind it, and we have some of it already. The school department has some of it already, so.
And to that point, I think the school is one department that would like to be an early adopter. They've shown a lot of interest in this. So I think we have some departments that we can collaborate with to sort of test out the functionality, and make sure that we've incorporated the right steps into the policy, to make sure that they, you know, they can actually make this a viable tool.
Yeah. I think, you know, moving to like maybe Section 8, the pieces around that are very important, we need to make sure that appropriate authorizations are in place, and/or that it's very clear that appropriate votes have to be taken before anyone can sign. And again, I agree, it may not need to be in here, but I think it's important to be in here, just to direct our, you know, our employees and elected boards and committees to say, if you're going to do this, you're going to make sure you're also checking these boxes.
Right. That was the.
Because just signing it is not, even if you've signed it in compliance with everything, it doesn't make it compliant without also ensuring those are in place.
Right.
So the, B, the select board authorizing a treasury warrant?
Right. I have a note on that one.
We might need to improve our process a little. The treasury warrant being either, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make sure. And I know we've given a specific authorization. I guess it would be good to get clarity from council if it can be tiered, we did it tiered, but can it be, or is it a single member?
So, I did ask that question, as preference.
Is a single.
The law gives the ability to appoint a single representative to handle this. It doesn't, it doesn't say it is or is not allowed.
It's silent.
It's silent. And so, it's not that you can't do it, it doesn't contemplate it. So it doesn't really get into, if you choose that option, what are the additional requirements, or what are the other considerations to work through?
It only speaks to that until, once it becomes a problem.
When someone challenges it, it's been done or hasn't been done, yeah.
Right.
Yep. And I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, I just, it goes along with, I think the other one is that it's a a single member, and both of them say, and I think currently the school has a two-member signing.
Yeah.
Not a quorum.
Right.
But that's not contemplated.
Correct.
Because I did, I did ask that, or we did. And it doesn't say it is or isn't, it just doesn't contemplate it. It says a single can be, so.
Right.
And we're getting into the things where you're authorizing a warrant, that would traditionally require a quorum and a meeting. If you're authorizing that action without the quorum, without the meeting, just at least making sure that everyone's aware that we're acting in that silent area, if that's what we're doing. I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, we should just be knowledgeable about that is the choice we're making. Or whatever board or committee or commission is doing. I guess a long story short, to say I'm in favor of that section, and maybe making it a little more detailed.
Yeah.
And getting input potentially from those who have been attempting, or have been using some version of that statute.
Okay.
You know, lending to what it says, what it doesn't say, and what we might be doing.
Right.
And understanding is that inform a potential change in our processes? Or do we, does that inform a just acknowledgement of, it's not contemplated, but we do allow it, or we don't allow it?
Right, okay.
By policy, right?
Right.
To your comment about that, that very large warrant right there, I could be mistaken, but I believe those can come out in PDF, and you can turn them into a certified electronic signable in a click, instead of printing them, scanning them. Because we can print to PDF and things like that, even if it doesn't have the functionality, so.
Yes, we'd have to change a workflow with the town accountant.
Yeah, there'd be a lot of workflow changes to adopt these things, so I think we, maybe that's something else we need to just make sure that we indicate, that there needs to be.
Well, that's what I want to make sure, is that.
Even if that's a procedure behind the policy, that says, if you want to implement this from a wet-signed state, there are steps you may need to go through, and collaboration to get there.
Right.
And we can't do them all overnight, even if everybody wants to get there, but it's fine if we want to, but it takes some time.
It does. That's correct.
But functionally, I think we can. I don't know of any that we couldn't, that are significant, unless they're required to be otherwise.
Okay. That was a longer first read than I've.
Maybe it's what I'm more, yeah.
And I think there may be more than three or four reads before we.
I agree. It's more complex than it sounds, inherently.
I certainly am in favor of moving in that direction when possible, as long as we're thoughtful about it. I know the rest of the world is transitioning to this way, and the industry that I work in is recognizing, as you said, this as a preference, in many cases, over wet signatures, because of all of the authentication that has to go into getting to the point of actually being the person at the keyboard. being the person at the keyboard, authorizing that, that click for that particular electronic signature application. I'm not endorsing anybody.
Understood. I know we endorsed or commented on the ones that we used, have licensing for, not their preference one way or another. Good point. We, yeah, I find that the electronic ones are actually more complex to get to than a wet sign. If you go to a person, a person and go, sign this, please, thanks, and move on, it's actually more complicated to get to a secure digital.
Right.
Once we have them. They're good. Okay. Well, we gave you plenty, I think.
Absolutely.
What else others? You two want to add?
Nope.
Good enough?
At this time. There's any other thoughts, just send them my way and I'll, I'll be working on proposed revisions. Excellent.
Okay. If I come across some other things other than that castle like I mentioned to you.
Yep.
I will let you know too. There's some good out there somewhere, so.
Awesome. Thank you. Got some already, but.
And for those, just acronym wise, like earlier with the R R F Bs, SAFE stands for the State Action for Public Health Excellence Program.
Right. Brian, when you and I were chatting about this earlier, you had mentioned the Board of Health has not weighed in on this yet?
This specific ask came across at the end of last week, so the, and it was after the Board of Health meeting.
Right.
So have they taken a specific stance on this ask to send in a support letter? No. With that being said, that's, can you correct me if I'm wrong? This topic of the SAFE legislation has been going on for almost two years now, and there's been a lot of advocacy throughout the state, but in Franklin County, specifically coming from the FERCOG, to encourage more of an investment and a coordination through the state into the way that local boards of health either have access to resources or partner together and revitalize. I know Phoebe, who sent this request, identified some of the concerns that came through the pandemic and through some of the other health initiatives that boards of health are struggling with right now. And a decentralized 351 town approach to public health has proven to be challenging without resources coming from the state to support that.
Right.
So the SAFE legislation is meant to do the resource building. It has credentialing and some other standards that boards of health across the Commonwealth should be working to make sure that their staff and the board members have the training and the knowledge. So that's a lot of what the SAFE legislation is aiming to accomplish. And I know that there's proponents and opponents for, for the legislation.
Ours is the most decentralized in the nation in Massachusetts.
So most states function in a county system. And so like sort of like county schools, and you may have, you know, the Irving School, but it's funded by the county. A lot of states have county health departments and they may have local offices, depending on the size of the municipality that they're serving, but its funding usually and its oversight come through the county. So Massachusetts, having done the opposite, where we abolished counties and kept local, you have one in every town.
Right. So we have 10 to 20x probably what most states have.
Depending on their size. And I think that the other challenges in a county format, you would have a centralized governance structure. They would oversee some of these and they may ramp it up in the larger communities and maybe have a smaller presence in the rural communities. But in the style that we have in Massachusetts, the rural communities have to have the same skill and ability level and access to resources that Boston needs to have. We don't have the same demand or volume or frequency, but we still have to be able to scale up and meet those challenges when they are presented to us. And that has continued to be a challenge specifically in Western Mass.
That doesn't mean they're equal.
Right.
In what they offer or can do.
Even if they're supposed to.
Right. Timeline on this one?
What's that?
I was just wondering what the timeline is on this one.
October 8th.
Of course they want to.
Sorry, of course. I love how they give us plenty of time to review these.
I mean, in principle.
Don't get me wrong. I'm not saying I disagree, but.
Yeah, I was going to say, in principle, I have no concerns with forwarding on a letter of support. The FERCOG has been a great, you know, pioneer in the partnership of healthcare throughout the county. And we just had a presentation from Phoebe at the last meeting. I know you missed it, but it was to really explain, you know, the breakdown of just what you were talking about, the local municipalities versus the rest of the country that work on a whole different system. And that showed up in just us receiving the money as opposed to, you know, other states the way they received it. So anything that can give the county as a, you know, anybody that falls under the cooperative that we, you know, that the FERCOG assists us with, if we can find a way to bring resources to that, I'm all for it. Just as I said last week, with the caveat that we don't forget about the local piece of that and that it's not just the county and that they still have to have an eye on each and every town within it, specifically the town of Irving is from where I said that's what I have to advocate for. So I don't see anything, I clicked over a couple of links. I was on the state website looking at the, all of the documentation that is, there's a lot of links and a lot of documentation for this one. And I could not read it all from the time I, you know, got the packet till now, but I don't see anything in there that would give me pause of forwarding along a letter of support.
So I agree in principle that there's a need for improving a regional response. I've been very supportive in a lot of ways and appreciated the partnership with FERCOG. There's a few things that give me reason to pause with this particular initiative. One of them, if you don't mind me saying so, is I always sort of catches my eye when something is embedded, one initiative is embedded within another one. And that a health initiative is tied into a larger overarching economic development issue sort of brought my attention to this. And I just with, I don't like the, yes, it's been going on for two years. Yes, we've been aware of it. Yes, it's stumbled and faltered in different ways, but now in the 11th hour, without enough time to really dig into what it is, the term, like the sense of urgency pushing for support, I'm not comfortable doing. I've read some high and mid-level pros and cons of this. Like Scott mentioned, you get very deep in the weeds. There's a lot of language and a lot of things. And I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I'm just not prepared to support it at this time.
And just because they've asked for a response back to where it, one, you have to respond at all, but two, even if you did spend more time and wanted to respond in November, there's no rule saying they won't accept your feedback in a later date.
And this hasn't necessarily not been going on for a lot longer than a week. So the opportunity is potentially long to come.
And if it doesn't pass this legislative session, which will end on December 31st, there's the potential that somebody may reintroduce it in the next legislative cycle and you'll have two years to consider that one.
This one's already two years close to and making, I think, so.
It had originally been pushed through the House and Senate under the Baker administration. And it was, I think at the time, vetoed by the governor. So the first iteration didn't make it through. And then it was reintroduced under the Healey administration.
Well, and I, and I stand somewhere, probably more towards Jim's side right now, but that's almost more so because there were that many links and I didn't get nearly as far down them as you two did. So, because I didn't have.
I don't have a problem with tabling this.
I'd like at least table it as well.
And we can come back after looking at it a little bit more. I'm not beholden to their October 8th deadline on September 30th.
Right. So we'll carry?
Yeah. Let's carry. I mean, I think, I think it's worth carrying and discussing more where we'll end. I don't know, but yeah.
Excellent.
And if we find out it's not needed, before we come to some decision one way or another, well, when we know, we're done.
Okay.
So. All right. With that, I think the only thing left is schedule.
Yes.
Vacant on our sheet right now, so looking forward, we, well, tonight effectively, we're back on a, every other week on the payroll, on the, the non-payroll warrant weeks, so on the AP warrant week, which since we didn't have a single signer on that, it would just made life easier, I think, for everybody because we don't have you signing and all that yet, plus the approval of it. If we want to continue that, I believe two weeks is a holiday, right?
Puts us on Columbus Day.
Yep. Why, I think that should be the 21st. Okay. So that being said, do we want to do a different day that week or do we want to potentially? What do we want to do with schedule? What's people's slots, availability? I don't know where everyone's at right now.
Let me pull up the calendar. The exception of the end of this week, I'm very flexible. Looking ahead.
If you're looking to do something different on the week of the 14th, the only day I would have available would be Wednesday, the 16th. I'm not available the 15th, 17th, and I prefer not to do one on a Friday night. I think by the end of the week, everybody wants to go home.
Yes.
But the other Mondays, any one of them, the 7th, 21st, 28th.
Whatever. I'll yield to whatever works for you two gentlemen.
I mean, if you want to keep it on the two-week rotation, I'd be fine with doing on Wednesday, the 16th, and then resuming back on Monday, the 28th. Keeps it on the same two weeks. If you would rather.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that. I just may need to do seven or 7:15. I don't think I could do six. I can't, well, I'd have to make some changes. I don't know if I could do early, so if that would be doable.
I mean, if we have, I can do one on the 15th if that works. I prefer to stay away from it, but it's not a, that's a Tuesday.
Still be 6:30, 7:00. It'd probably be 7 o'clock that night too, so it wouldn't probably make a big difference. Does 7:15 work for you guys? We don't have to try to. Keep it a shorter agenda and.
If we're going over two weeks.
If we're not going, right, if we're going two more weeks, we'll have to do something, right? So is there? Okay. That was, that'd be my other question. All right, well, we can maybe, maybe we'll revisit what the next meeting is, but plan on the 28th. Does that, that make sense? Like what's availability next week or the week after Columbus Day?
I mean, I was going to say.
If we have to do the 21st and the 28th or something like that, you know?
If you wanted for October, I know we want to get back to this cycle, but if you wanted for October to pull another one on the 7th and then the 21st, and then we revisit where we're at as we get into budget season anyways, in November, December, I'm fine with that too.
Budget season.
Yeah, it's right around the corner. I know. It's like a curse word.
We're almost there. Yay. Have we left yet?
I mean, it's, you know, opportunistic.
Why don't I, why don't we play it by year, right? Like right now, I mean, my friend Wood, there hasn't been crazy long list. There are things out there though, so I will, we'll figure out scheduling based on how the agenda's building up.
Okay.
And along with being CTV and understanding that week, Wednesday, availability of the week before, the week after, it sounds like it's much more open.
Yep.
For both of you. So we'll play it by year. Does that work?
That's fine.
Maybe we meet on the 21st and 28th and go from there or something like that, but we can.
I think I said, I, I have commitments at the end of this week, but beyond that, I'm, whatever works for you two, I will make work for me.
Okay. Okay. All right, so TBD of the 28th is a probably, and we'll see what we fit in between there for some, for one meeting most likely.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for tonight?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. With that, make a motion to adjourn at 7:50, 6:00 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.